Roll call for attendance, please.
Oh, as an attendance, Mike.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes. Please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under our power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please respond for a moment of prayer or sign meditation. All right, we're going to start with announcements or correspondences. Do we have any announcements or correspondences this morning? Hearing none. We'll move into, we have no scheduled meeting guests today. I will entertain a motion to approve the six eleven twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
I will second.
I'm in favor, Mike.
I abstain.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the six sixteen twenty twenty five special meeting minutes.
So moved.
I'll second that one.
I'm in favor, Mike.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second, I need to add something to the agenda.
Okay.
Under administration, I want to put appointment of township fiscal officer replacement.
So number two be?
In administration, I think.
Yeah, administration to be appointment.
Fiscal officer replacement.
Do we want to move the executive session on the agenda up to the top two?
I think we should.
Okay. So we're going to move our executive session over the end of the meeting to the beginning of the meeting today.
It should be quick.
Yes, so that'll be right before police. Are there any other changes or amendments to the agenda from the department?
I did need to leave by nine o'clock today, so I just had one informational update and one discussion question, so if we wanted, if I could move up, we feel like we need to.
Okay. Yeah, we can move that up.
Okay. We'll move right under there. We can move that in right before police.
What time do you need to leave?
Not until nine thirty.
Okay, so you're good. Okay. Yeah, we'll put you right before police then.
Okay.
So we'll do that in session. Come back and then have you go.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other amendments or changes? All right, hearing none, roll call for acceptance of the agenda.
I'm in favor, Mike.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the purchase orders.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'm in favor, Mike.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Abstain. I'll entertain a motion to accept the warrants.
Motion passed.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'm in favor, Mike.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Abstain.
Motion passed.
Okay. And now we'll go into our public comment section. We ask that there is a three-minute limit per person, and we do thank you for being here today in advance for your comments. We will start with our sign-in sheet. If anybody has not signed in yet that would like to speak, I'll set it back up here, but we'll start with Patty Har Young.
Good morning. I'm Patty Har Young. I have lived in Brimfield since nineteen eighty-eight, and I retired from the Brimfield Police Department with thirty-three years of service. The reason why I'm speaking this morning is because I would like to thank everyone who fully explained the potential shortage of funds in the general fund last, at the last meeting, and also the possibility that there is an eight hundred thousand dollar deficit that needs to be financially covered. And I would like to mention that for the possible solutions that were suggested for the financial difficulties, one of them was to reduce funding to the police department, the fire department, and the road crew for, by lowering the amount of JED funds that they receive. The thing is, is that the emergency services all do have levies. The Brimfield citizens have voted for the levies for the police, fire, and the road crew. The levies do not cover one hundred percent of the necessary expenditures for these departments, and so therefore the departments are supplemented by the JED funds. The thing is, is that more than fifty percent of the Brimfield voters have voted for those departments and for those levies, and they have renewed those levies a couple of different times over the years as well. That shows that Brimfield citizens want those departments. They want the services provided by those departments. Those departments serve one hundred percent of our communities. So therefore, to reduce the funding is, in my mind, is something that is like a slippery slope. If the funding is reduced to those departments, it's a possibility that they might not ever get that funding back. So therefore, I would like the township to still continue to look at the expenditures that the general fund is currently covering. Many of them are essential services, but there are also some non-essential services that the general fund is paying, and those non-essential services do not have levies, and they do not have grants, and they only, maybe one percent of our population is actually participating in those programs. So again, if you would take a hard look at the general fund and determine what is necessary and what is not necessary, I would be appreciative of it, and I also think that the other Brimfield Township community would also be appreciated of that as well. And again, I want to thank all the employees of Brimfield Township. You all work very hard. You all do an extremely good job, and the citizens of Brimfield absolutely appreciate what you're doing. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thanks, Patty. Thank you for your comments. Next on the list is going to be Daniel Mars.
I'm Daniel Mars, nineteen forty-four, Old Forge Road. And even though I've met with most of you already at various times over the years, I wanted to take this opportunity to officially introduce myself as Daniel Mars, candidate for Brimfield trustee. Having originally moved to Brimfield in nineteen eighty, I have many fond memories of growing up here. I remember riding my bike to the Sparkle Market, Thompson Drug, and Frank's Ice Cream. Joanne Sprague was my bus driver when I attended Brimfield Elementary. I'm a proud graduate of Field High School. Soon after high school, I moved away to pursue education and business opportunities. Returning to the area, I lived in some of Brimfield's neighboring communities, where I started a small business and raised my family. Through open enrollment, my children attended Field Local Schools. Two of my three children graduated from Field, and the third graduated from Biomed Science Academy. Eventually, an opportunity presented itself for my family and me to move back to my hometown of Brimfield. So why am I running for township trustee? Honestly, I'm a little out of my comfort zone in doing so. I've always been more comfortable playing more of a supporting role to individuals and organizations, but I felt strengthened, the community. Over the years, I've supported Brimfield's community by plowing snow for the Brimfield food cupboard, participating in and promoting Lions Club events, volunteering for scouting projects, building the little libraries for Brimfield and Suffield, coaching youth soccer teams, and supporting campaign efforts for candidates that I felt would be of benefit to the community. So I feel that the time has come for me to step up into a role where I'm able to continue making a positive impact in Brimfield. Now, I don't have all the solutions to Brimfield's issues figured out yet, but I'm willing to work with those who also love our town to figure them out. I have been looking a little bit lately at the park department's year-end report for twenty twenty-four, and there's a lot of things that the park really does well. I just attended the Touch a Truck, and that was a great event. It was an honor to participate in that. I think there are some events that we should probably re-look at and see. I'd love to meet with you, Cassie, and kind of go over some of the park things. I think there's some things that we could do to save some money and make a better park district. And so I would like to talk with you, I would like to talk to each of the department heads, police, and fire, and road. I'll talk with you just briefly, but I would like to continue that conversation and see where we can save some money. And I'm proud to be a candidate for trustee in Brimfield, and so I'd like you to consider me when it's voting time. Thank you.
You didn't say about your flying Christmas trees.
I don't know that should come up in this meeting.
All right, thank you this morning for your comments. Hearing no other comments on the sheet this morning, we will move into safety concerns. Are there any safety concerns that should be brought before the board?
No. No more rain.
No more rain, all right. I can agree with that.
No more wheat.
Yep. All right, with that said, we're going to move into the business portion of our meeting. This morning, we do have an executive session, so on this date, six twenty-seven twenty five, trustee Koya moved to convene an executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one twenty-one point twenty-two G, for the purposes of considering the following matters: discipline. I need a second for that motion.
I will second that.
We'll need a roll call.
I'm in favor, Mike.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Motion passed, we're on an executive session at eight eleven.
Question. Eight fifty-one AM. We'll continue with our business meeting. Parks and Rec, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So I just had two items today. One was an update about the Touch a Truck event on six twenty-one. It went very well. We had, we think, our largest attendance yet, about five hundred attendees, which is really great. The only issue that we had this year was a lack of parking. The event started at eleven and our parking was full when it started. People started arriving early. So between both the Lions Park and the community center, both lots were full. So we had a post-event meeting to reevaluate the event layout and location for next year to accommodate for that. But I wanted to thank all the department heads that participated and everybody who attended. So thank you for coming. And then I had one item for discussion about the Swamp Town Festival. So I just wanted to see where we were at with that, with everything going on with the budget. If we wanted to continue with Swamp Town Festival, if we wanted to reevaluate or...
Well, I told you my thought. I think you ought to abandon it this year. I mean, there's too many variables going on. I mean... Thank you. That's too difficult. I just think it's not gonna be what it was. And just, and the money-wise, I mean, we can sure use that money somewhere else. So my vote, if I was asked, would be to deep-six it.
Are you making a motion?
I guess I'm making a motion.
Go ahead and make a motion. I'll second it.
I'm making a motion that we take a break from, actually Brimfests, but now Swamp Fest, just for the year, to let all the building and everything get done around here.
So the motion is second on the floor for discussion. Cassie, have we received any sponsorships yet to this point, or what's the status of the project?
We have tentative sponsorships. I was just kind of waiting on word whether we're proceeding or not. The biggest issue that we're running into now is that this would be the time that I'd be putting deposits down for bands and rides and things, but we just haven't had that, the money to do that in the general fund at this time. So everything's kind of on hold until we make sure that those resources are available.
Could you give us an estimated amount of what the Brimfest in the past has been and cost us?
Well, in the past years, Brimfest has cost about thirty to thirty-five thousand. And then we take in about fifteen, ten to fifteen thousand in sponsorships for that. So this year, we were going to readjust it to have the smaller events. We were gonna add some to Touch a Truck and then have the Let's Glow, Brimfield, and Swamp Town and make each of those events a little less expensive. So we're looking at a target of like ten to fifteen for this Swamp Town event.
I think it's important to note that you look at other communities such as North Canton. They recently announced the cancellation of their July Fourth fireworks because they didn't have any organizations to run it. And I think that's one of the misnomers that we should discuss today is that this was never intended to be a Brimfield Township Board of Trustees event. This was always coordinated and ran by nonprofit organizations. Cassie, has anybody stepped up to offer to run this program for us to take it over at this point? Or has it just been us carrying the ball since the chamber ceased?
Financially, it's been mostly Brimfield Township. We have had assistance from the Kelso House volunteering with the beer garden and providing their land for us. But I would say the majority of the planning and the finances are Brimfield Township, yes.
Actually, the Lions backed out this year. They ran the parade in the past. So they decided not to run that. So we're actually losing community support for...
Oh, the Lions and the Chamber of Commerce, that was a big part of it back when we started.
Right. Well, that's why I brought North Canton, because I just saw it in the paper the other day. That the whole reason they canceled their fireworks was they just couldn't find a nonprofit to run it. It was never a North Canton issue. So they're shutting that down this year. And it's against the concern, right?
There's definitely nothing against these organizations. They're having the same problem we are.
They don't have enough people to volunteer, be part of it, right?
You've got the same ten people that do everything in this township.
Listen, I'm a huge advocate for Brimfest. I love it. I hate to see it not happen this year. But I think maybe we need to use 2025 as a time to A, set some of that money aside because of general fund. But B, maybe this will need to start having honest conversations with the nonprofits in the area and see who wants to step up or what organization might want to take this project over because it shouldn't be a burden on the taxpayers. But we still want the event to happen. So I think we have to find a better balance of how the township supports it and where the funding comes from.
And you guys will.
Yes, I agree.
So her mic's gonna start the Chamber of Commerce.
After he starts the Friends of the Parks.
What's that?
Oh, he said after he starts the Friends of the Parks committee, yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion on the floor.
So we have a motion, a second on the floor, to do cancel Swamp Town Fest, which was the replacement of Brimfest for twenty, for 2025.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other questions for Parks and Rec? If not, we'll continue on to the front part of our agenda and then back to police departments. Troy, what was yours?
Yeah, thanks, Nick. Just a couple of items for the board, just update information only. Sergeant Matt Kennedy's graduating from a three-week police executive leadership college program today. I'll be heading down there shortly for his graduation in Columbus. So with Sergeant Kennedy's completion of the program, all of our supervisors at the police department will have completed the PELC program. Second item for update for the board, we're in the process now of distributing the new body cams to all of our officers. You may recall from prior discussions with the board, we obtained the bulk of the costs for those body cams were obtained through the Ohio Body War Camera Grant Program. So we're in the process of getting all that out to our staff and getting those out in the field for the officers. We're looking to go live with those on July first. And the final item is we'll be doing a filler cruiser this Saturday over at Walmart. We'll be there with food cupboard folks from ten to six. If you're out and about shopping, please stop by and visit us at the filler cruiser at Walmart. Anything collected that day goes directly to our Brimfield Community Food Cupboard. So that's all I have for you this morning.
Any questions for the police department this morning? Hearing none, we'll move into fire department. Chief, what was yours?
Okay, just information updates also. We continue to work with the new entry-level firefighters that was approved. Three young men that have came on to go to fire academy next. And they have a lot of stuff they need to get done, and they're slowly getting that done throughout the summer so we can hire them on around the first of August. And then just, I know it's an update, but we haven't heard anything on the federal grant for the new fire truck that we submitted for from the federal government of a million dollars. So really hoping to hear something soon, but still haven't heard anything. That's it.
All right. Do we have any questions for the fire department? Hearing none, we'll move into administration. Olive, what was yours?
Just one item for the board to accept, the resignation/retirement of fiscal officer John Dazell effective August first, 2025.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation and retirement letter of fiscal officer John Dazell.
Snacking.
Nick, you making that? Okay, all in favor, Mike?
I hate to say yes, but I know you must go.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And then the second item was added by Mike.
Okay, well, I have done a lot of soul searching because John and I have been here together a long time. And I know we have to make this appointment quickly. And I talked to Holly and she got me a little bit irritated, but that was okay. But my thing is, we have a gentleman in this audience, not you, Chick, that has wanted to do the fiscal office for a long time. And I've gotten to know him. We've argued, we've talked, but we get along great. And he didn't want to run against John. And what I'm saying is, we have Tom Johnson, who I've talked to, who is a veteran with a long list of things that he's done. He's a great family man. He is a dedicated member of our zoning board, and I've heard nothing but praise about what he's done. He's a strong supporter of the field schools, and he worked for another government office, in the post office, doing various, you know, involved with the stuff. So my, you know, you guys all might disagree with me, but I would rather, what I'm gonna do is I'm making a motion to appoint Tom Johnson as the fiscal officer appointment. And I've checked with Chad. I had Holly check with a prosecutor. It is well within our rights, if we have two votes, that he can take over. The thing is, we need someone that can start immediately tapping into John's knowledge. Because I tell you, John and I are still gonna talk, and you might see us in the audience one of these days. But when John's done, he's done. You know, you're not just gonna just be able to call him anytime. And Tom is retired, and he's just, he's passionate about this community. Sometimes maybe a little too much, but so am I. So I just think I would trust that man with my kids. He's a dedicated person to this township. So I'm making a motion, Sue, that we appoint Tom Johnson to replace John Dazell for the remainder of his term. I just need a second so we can all talk about it.
I would second that for discussion.
And John, please weigh in, because I know you've told me that Tom Johnson, multiple, he calls you. He's very...
Tom Johnson comes to the office a lot. He does. And we discuss the township fiscal stuff. We go through questions that he might have. He's been very qualified to answer questions. I answer questions for him, but I do appreciate his involvement that he has.
And I mean, do you have any?
I don't have any reservations, but that's you guys, so...
Oh, yeah, but you are the fiscal officer.
I don't. I don't have any reservations with Tom being the fiscal officer.
I think a position like this, to make this nomination without any meetings would be concerning. I think this needs to be tabled for further discussion. I've had conversations upon receiving the letter of resignation or retirement with the county auditor, and they've already offered to step in and help with the interview process to make sure that we're hiring the most qualified person for the position. I think the qualifications is a piece that I need to look at and better understand for me to truly vote on that. We're looking at our current financial situation, trying to figure out these numbers, trying to figure out the budget for general fund, looking at what those actions are gonna be moving forward. And I would not be comfortable making the vote today. It's not based on the person at all. It's based on, I need to see the qualifications. And I want to make sure that we have a strong fiscal person in there with a strong fiscal accounting background as part of that. Like I said, the county auditor has offered him and his staff to be part of an interview process with the board. And I think just to take a swift action of, we just heard this week about the resignation and then, you know, less than seven days later, later we slide somebody in, I don't think that's the right move for this community. I think we really need to consider qualifications, experience, knowledge in that position. Typically, it's an election. An election is a popularity contest a lot of times. This is a chance for us to bring in... This is a chance for us to bring in a knowledge-based person for that position for a timeframe to help us reorganize and get everything set up correctly.
John, how much time did you have? When you were on here?
How much training?
Yeah.
Oh, a couple hours.
But I mean, I have, I mean, this is our opportunity to make sure that we do this the right way. There is the LGS, the Local Government System, or Local Government, I don't know what the S stands for. But out of the auditor's office, they will assist in this transition process. County auditor has already said they'd step up and assist during this transition process. And I'm not saying this wouldn't be the vote down the road, but I think we owe it to the citizens of Brimfield Township to truly interview and truly look through this process to make sure we're hiring the most qualified person. We're not asking the voters to vote on this, we as the board are being charged to appoint somebody. And just to appoint somebody without even looking at the potential pool that's out there, I just couldn't support that.
Yeah, I just, I just know that John has more knowledge than a lot of these guys we're talking about. And you're gonna lose all that by not having to continuously. And I mean, all the auditor and all that other people, I'm sure they will come and help, you know, whoever we decide, you know. So, yeah, I, I respect your opinion, but I know where my opinion is.
I know, I know that the revised code, when you have a fiscal officer that resigns or retires or whatever.
Keep saying, remember, retire. Make sure that's retirement.
He's retired. But anyway, the revised code said that when the person resigns or you no longer have a fiscal officer, you have thirty days in which to appoint somebody to fill that position. And one of the requirements is that they must be a resident of Brimfield. And I know John came in to us, John and his background before coming here was an underwriter. So he had quite a bit of experience in, in numbers.
But I'm not an accountant, so I never was those first nineteen years either.
Yes, but anyway, John served us well over the years and I hate to see him go. But there are requirements. If we don't appoint somebody within thirty days of August the first, then there's a committee that has to be looked at. And if that doesn't work, it ends up going to the judge. So it's up to the three of us to, to find a replacement or have somebody apply for that. And, and Tom Johnson has a very good background in his past work experiences. Also, he is a resident of Brimfield and loves Brimfield. But the main thing you do is you have to put the residents first. You have to do what is going to be best for fourteen thousand people. And I think, in my opinion, to vote today, I would like to be better prepared and more knowledgeable of a person. So I would say that, that we would just have to see what, what comes up. And if people feel that they're qualified, the state does not require that the person that is a fiscal officer has to have a degree in accounting, doesn't have to have all these things. That, and, and I, I understand that Matt Kelly, our auditor, who's very knowledgeable in this, is willing to, to, because I, I'm not a financial person, that were able to help us pick the best. And, and the issues that we have, we have access to other people that are much more qualified than I am to give us some answers and find out what we need to do. That's what I think.
Ready for a vote?
Any other discussion on this?
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
No.
Nick?
No.
Motion failed.
I just, I just couldn't do it.
I would say though, under this, is that we need to start the advertising period now that we officially accepted the retirement letter from the fiscal officer. And we do need to move quickly on this, but I think we just need to do a thorough search. And I encourage anybody that is a resident that has that knowledge, that skill, that background, that interest in being in that position to apply. And then we have a fair interview process through that to ensure that we fill that position as best as we can.
All that I would ask in this process is that please don't dilly-dally on it, we need to get somebody in there. Because I do not wanna leave them abandoned with not knowing all the information and not gonna be able to meet with people in October telling them how to run the fiscal office. So I do have a requirement through the State of Ohio on what I do pass along, and I will have that letter. I was gonna do it today, I don't know, I got in late last night, I'm probably not gonna do it today. But beginning of next week, I'll have the letter with all the information that we need. But I would like to spend some time with that person before, before that happens. But if it takes three months for you to hire somebody, I won't be able to do that.
No, and I'm not looking for this to take three months, I mean, I think this should go up for advertisement today. We should be getting interviews scheduled in the next week or so. I mean, this is something that we need to move quickly on. I know by law, we have thirty days after.
I know, but I, I want at least a week and a half or so to sit with the person to go through stuff with them, so they understand at least.
No, I think that's, that's fair. But like I said, this is nothing against Tom Johnson or any other person that would have been brought up today. I just believe it's our responsibility as a board to go through these steps in the proper manner and to interview and make sure that when it's an appointment, it's different than we actually have a voice in this. And we need to really ensure that we have the right person in the position, especially over these next two years.
Yeah, well, I know, I know how government works, it's gonna be sixty days before you have anybody.
We'll see how it plays out, but I just, I can't without, I mean, I haven't even had a conversation with Mr. Johnson about the position. I just can't do that.
Well, I know you and, no, no, I'm not going there.
Like I said, this is all professional, it's all about the best move that Brimfield Township has. Okay, so Holly, do we need to make a motion for Holly to start advertising, or how do you want to handle that?
We can, I mean, we should, I, my retirement forces that anyway.
Okay, so Holly, can you start working on that?
I'll get it posted as soon as we're done here.
Okay, thank you. Anything else under Administration?
No other items. Oh, I do just wanna kind of echo Cassie and thank everybody for their assistance with events. You know, Parks can't do it alone. And Dave and his crew are always, always jumping in and filling every need. And same, police and fire are always there, ready to, to assist and do whatever they need. And so it really is a group effort for all these events, IT everybody. So I really appreciate everybody's willingness to assist and jump in where needed. And there's never any issues with that and it's, it's really nice that everybody pulls together. So thank you all. Dave, please thank your crew, because I know you guys do a lot of work preparing for all these. Now, you guys are kind of the behind the scene guys and you don't always get the, the thanks and the attention. So again, just kind of thank you to everybody, really appreciate the support.
Anything else for Administration today?
That's it, thank you.
Hearing nothing from anybody else, we'll move into Zoning and Economic Development. Mike, yours, sir.
Yeah, thanks. First and foremost, I wanna, you know, congratulate and John on his retirement. And we're truly gonna miss him and thank you for all the hard work and dedication for all your years here.
Thank you, Mike.
Truly appreciate it. Permit fees are thirty-nine thousand eight forty-two eighty-five. Old businesses will need board approval to send four-six-nine-five Estes Drive to the prosecutor for cleanup. We've had issues since two thousand and thirteen with this property. As you previously know, this one recently came about as the residents are all calling and complaining. We have junk vehicles, debris, refrigerators, all kinds of appliances. And it just, it, it's more and more as we speak. So we kind of rushed it to get it on for today, just on the amount of calls we've been getting. But this one has been in court, they were found guilty to, to clean up and they did do it at this time. And then it just, it's right back to the same old thing, so.
So how does that process work? Do we go to the courts, they order them to clean it up, or they do a partial cleanup, we have to start the process again, or how does that work?
Well, in this case, I kind of expedited it. We did send letters in earlier this year and they've gone ignored. You know, so I'd like the prosecutor to continue on the existing case we had because that was part of the agreement is to keep this clean, so.
Are you getting any help with the prosecutors, with all those other ones we still have sitting out there?
We have.
What about the one on Sandy Lake Road?
They have filed for those properties, but I haven't gotten the mediation date or court date yet.
So sometime next year?
I'm hoping this year with the new prosecutor.
Yeah, nothing seems to have changed.
Not yet.
Is it on the prosecutor or is it on the courts? Is the courts backed up for mediation dates?
I think it's, I think it's the courts.
Just backed up.
Okay, I would like to make that motion to send to the prosecutor's office at forty-six ninety-five Estes Drive with the prosecutor to clean up, clean up this mess. This mess has been going on since two thousand and fifteen.
So you have a motion on for me, a second?
I'll second.
All right, so if this, this will just cause them to send a letter?
This is send a letter and continuance on to the court case what they had before.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next thing I have is, I'll, I'll need the Brimfield Township Zoning Commission to request the Board of Trustees to set public hearings prior to July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five regarding text amendments for section five forty temporary vendors. Also, chapter ten definitions, appendix E, and section five ten point oh nine B, parking and storage of vehicles and trailers. All the documents were in one drive. There'll be three separate public hearings.
So I need to do this three different times, right?
We have Tuesday evening meeting.
Yeah, so we have, that's our Tuesday meeting will be our next meeting, which is Tuesday, July eighth from at six P M. Are you anticipating any loud, large crowds, a large number of people for any of these? Has there been a lot of comments? I'm just trying to figure out timing. Do we need, can we do them in fifteen minute increments? Do we need longer?
Originally, these, these drew a large crowd originally. But I think the way that the language from the zoning commission is coming to you guys, I don't anticipate big crowds with the new. They, they listened to the crowds and they, they changed the wording of both of these text amendments to appease the, the people that came to the meetings. So I don't anticipate large crowds at this point.
Okay, so you think fifteen minutes for each one would be good?
I think so.
And it would be my proposal that we hold our public hearing on July eighth, twenty twenty-five, at five fifteen P M for text amendments to section five four zero temporary vendors. And we'll do these as three separate motions. Is there, there's total of three of these, right?
There's three, yep.
Yep, so that'd be the first one, so that's my motion, five fifteen P M for temporary vendors.
So moved.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next, I'd make a motion to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July eighth, five thirty P M for chapter ten definitions.
So moved.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue? Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And then I'd make a motion to propose a public hearing for Tuesday, July eighth, at five forty-five P M for section five one zero point zero nine B, parking and storage of vehicles and trailers.
So moved.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And that'll get us right up to our six o'clock meeting.
Okay, thank you. I have one last thing, I have Sue and Mike's signature, I just need Nick's. This is the enterprise on agreement for Village of St. Edwards. It's just part of the closing documents. After this, it goes to the county commissioners, one of our commissioners is here today and she's gonna be seeing this soon.
Can I just confirm, are there four or five? I was just looking, I'm looking at this, there's the, the section five forty, there's the chapter ten definitions, appendix E and section five ten, or so, two of those?
So chapter ten definitions is appendix E, so that's.
Got it, thank you.
Mike, I will send this right back down to you.
Any other big announcements?
No, no official announcements, a lot of things in the works, but no official announcements, yeah. Other than, you know, the plaza, Creston McDonald's has started, so.
Is there any announcements of what's going in there yet, other than it's just a plaza, because there's been a lot of?
Just a plaza, just a plaza so far.
How many estimated units are gonna go?
Fifteen, fifteen.
And is that all?
And that's subject to.
Or is that two?
It's, it's subject to change, they're each fifteen hundred square feet. So if one, if they have a bigger user, they can take three or four units and combine them, so. Yeah, it might be less than fifteen, but that's the availability.
Any more movement behind us, other than Wing Warehouse and?
Wing Warehouse and the Hallmark so far. We discussed potential restaurant where the sheds were.
Oh, okay, so they want a brick and mortar or something there?
Correct, we, we've talked about building onto that. It was the goal of him getting rid of the sheds to free up that space. And I mean, we've got to jump through some hoops with zoning, maybe some variances will be needed, but I think that would be a good asset for them. Many, many other things in the works, there's many developers I'm dealing with right now. I'd say six new projects, so it just keeps going.
Any other questions for Zoning and Economic Development?
Yeah.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move into the Road Department. Dave, yours.
All righty, old business, the pre-construction meeting with Rycon went well. They're planning on serving chip and seal either at the end of July or August, first week or two of August. They're a little bit behind right now because of weather. Some new businesses, some F Y Is, we had five burrows in the last two weeks, so we've been spending some time at the cemetery. We got things ready to go for a toucher truck, participated in it, which was pretty crowded. We had a hundred and sixty-five construction hats and within the first hour, they were gone. So I mean, and there was a lot of kids that turned down even, so they, they went, they went very fast. We ditched a couple areas and replaced a cauldron pipe. We did have some tree damage from some of these storms. Next, excuse me, next Tuesday, I have a pre-construction meeting with Cardinal Asphalt for Sherman Wood, Sherman Wood Road Project at the county building. I need a couple board approval things today. Accept the resignation of Tom, Todd Johnson effective June eleventh, twenty twenty-five. He was our part-time worker. He, between his hospital stuff, his nursing and that, it kind of got a little too much for him. So he, he left the Road Department as our part-time.
Okay, I'll make that motion, Dave.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Are we looking to backfill that position now?
Yeah, we're actually already putting some things out there, getting some applications out.
Okay, so we're actively collecting applications.
Yes. And the second board approval I'll need is on hiring T L Z to inspect the chip and seal project and the paving project for twenty twenty-five, at a cost of twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, Dave, I will make that motion.
Second, what, what areas are that, that you would work on?
The Sherman Wood paving pro, back there, the development off of, yeah, Sherman Road and then all of our chip and seal projects, trying to remember all the names now. Mahoy, Powder Mill, Klein, Burnett, Powell Road to forty-three, Brimfield Drive, Sax Road and Newton Street.
Was this built into the contract or is this above and beyond our contract?
This is above and beyond, this is what we normally, we've been doing the last few years of having an inspector, especially the Sherman Wood project. I definitely need one out there because it's, it's, that's gonna be a major project, so.
Is this a new company or the same company we've always used?
No, this is actually a new company this year, so it's a recommendation of the Portage County Engineers.
Okay.
All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and.
Hey, Dave, the other thing that I think you need to make this board aware of, that you are still, you need a storage facility.
Yes.
And you need it before winter. You can't be storing your trucks and tractors in a salt dome. So, you know, you know, for the two of you that are gonna still be here, because I know how long government works, he needs a shed. He has money, you guys need to really work on that, because.
When we say shed, are we talking like pole barns?
We can't do any more levies for this township. We're not building a seven million dollar Road Department garage, we already have a behemoth over here. He just wants a damn pole barn, something to put something in.
Do we have, where are we? Do we have, where are we looking to put it in?
I know, you all need to start working on it. You need to, we need to figure out the money. I mean, storing equipment in a salt dome is beyond me.
I agree.
So, I'm, no, no, nothing from you right now, Dave. I just want them to know that you need it.
No, that, that's.
Cause Dave, Dave's not here that much longer either.
That's something we were looking into since we, we're probably not gonna move forward with a new building. We're probably looking at putting, uh, coming back later. I was gonna talk to a couple people, see what the prices of a pole building would be. Uh, it would probably go somewhere in the vicinity of where Lion Shelter is right now.
So take that shelter down?
Take the shelter down, 'cause we have equipment in there now, and then.
Tear that down.
Make it big enough there, 'cause where we were looking at, say, putting up the new building would be across the driveway and that.
Well, that's why I was wondering, 'cause we had a lot of dirt we have to move to put it across the driveway there, but if we go where the Lion Shelter is, it's more just.
Well, ju- just the pole.
Yeah, I mean, that Lion Shelter's in bad shape.
I, well, I know, but we wanted that to come down two years ago.
It needs.
Yeah, I can't get it down till you, you don't have storage, so.
So will this be a cold storage barn then?
Yes, it'd be a cold storage.
So what, we, we're not gonna run any electricity?
It's like something out of.
Well, you'll, we'll have electric to it, where you turn lights on, or, it's, uh, again, it's something I've been starting to think about. Uh, store signs in there, you know, like the road closed signs, this and that, plus the tractors, the mowers, the extra dump trucks, you know, get early out of the weather.
So, I, my opinion is then, that if this is something you wanna do before winter, we need to move on this now, because we need to add this into the calculation. When we start to look at the general fund, what we're gonna pull from roads, fire, police, if that's the route that goes, or we make changes to the general fund, costs like this have a direct impact on that, so we're gonna need some estimates.
Right, well, and that's, I've, uh, I've, I haven't had a chance to really talk to anybody, quote, pricing of them as of right now. Uh, but we'll, we'll see. That's what we're looking, I, I don't wanna, how do you say it? I don't wanna jump, build something too small, then I'm parking equipment beside it because I can't get it in. So, that's, we're probably looking at somewhere close to forty by eighty.
See, you should have some rough estimates, 'cause we, I mean, we've been down this road once or twice already, where we looked at building the road garage, so you know how much equipment you have. We should have an idea of what we can store it in there.
Right, well, the buildings we were looking at before, the, the new road garage is gonna take some of that equipment too and put it inside there. So, you know, I mean, it's kinda, since we're not moving that way, we gotta shift our focus this way, so.
Well, if I could just jump in there on that, we just have to be aware that, uh, we were in the same situation with the, the fire department admin building, where we had multiple years of proposals that never went anywhere, and it came to the point where we had nothing else that we could do. We had to proceed.
Right.
Um, as we know throughout the process of both of these buildings, things changed along the way with needs and, and, and requirements that bump prices. You're gonna run into the same thing with Dave. I mean, Dave has the same issues. He does not have a building. He, he needs space. Um, and we, we've only, we've done it a couple times, kinda like, I mean, it has to be a point where somebody says, you know what, Dave, we're just gonna do this, 'cause we have to, and then we'll figure it out as we go. I mean, unfortunately, that's where we are with some.
I'm, I'm supportive of a little pole barn, it was just when we were looking at a multi-million dollar building, that was just, that just wasn't in the box.
No, I know, but that was one of the options, and then we had some other ones, but there, yeah, something has to be done. I mean, we'll, we'll start losing equipment down there for, from wear and tear that are parked outside, so.
Yep, at least a lot of our equipment, not on wood, is semi-made for the weather, you know, I, I mean.
Yeah, we wanna get it under roof.
Yeah, I, I rarely see it under a roof, it makes it, makes me more comfortable, so, yeah.
But there are things that we need around, that just need to be, they need to be done. I mean, and they, they can only be pushed off for so long, and then they have to.
Yeah, and I'm not saying push this off, I'm just saying.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just making a comment, Nick, that's all.
Yeah, I was, I, I think Dave really needs to get us a price and start working on it though, because here we are moving into first of July, we're gonna run out of construction time to do it. We're gonna put bottom of somebody's list as it is, so.
Well, this will be an extra spot, I guaran- I guarantee it.
And I know Roy's not in this conversation, but Roy's out of space over there already as well, you know?
Making use of every inch.
I know.
Got a closet, we use it. All right.
Okay.
All right, I conclude my report.
All right, Dave, when you get some numbers or some ideas, bring them to the board, so we can go from there. All right, we've already covered parks and rec. Nothing under information technology for today. Under cemetery, we had one deed that we did sign. Uh, this is gonna move us into fiscal office, uh, old business. John, this is.
That's, that's Holly's, they put out there. Holly, did you put that out on the agenda?
Uh, yes, so we, at the last meeting, we talked about moving forward with the bond validation proceedings with Dinsmore, um, so just added that back on for today.
So, at the last meeting, we talked about the administrative budget, we talked about the police, fire, and road budgets. Um, we're still in discussion on those, we'll come back to that, but the first piece that's before us is an option to move forward with bond validation proceedings. This would allow us to, um, incur a loan to pay off the estimated eight hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, but I keep, I, I know that eight hundred keeps getting thrown around, though we don't think it's gonna be anywhere near that number, but.
Yeah, that's, that's the top end.
Yeah.
Especially if you negotiate down.
What this is, this is their, the bond council had to do it a different way, because the original one that we went through and started working on was, and I guess they didn't realize it. I mean, I didn't know that it was an issue, but because we kept the front of the building, it was considered a construction loan here, or a remodel instead of new construction, which changed the bond requirements to get it. The second thing that we're doing here is the process for a remodel building, because we kept that. Um, so this, again, is gonna do the same thing that the first one is, we just have to do different processes, and they gave a list of the, the items there and the timeline in regards to when they think they can get it all proceed. So we just, what we have to do here, if you wanna, my suggestion is that you pass a vote to say to proceed with that.
John, if we were to proceed with this, and, I don't know, we dig through the budget, we find the dollar amounts, we come to resolutions on this, we're able to pay it off, we can just stop this process.
The only person that we would owe would be Dinsmore, or Dins, Dinsmore for their, their work.
But we can stop the process.
Yeah, you can stop at any time if we figure out anything before it's finalized, um, but we, we are, they're a law firm, so we're incurring costs from them.
Right.
So we'd have to pay that, but.
Also, I guess the second piece to that would be, we set this threshold to eight hundred in this, this process during the talk, but if we get through all the steps that gets us into September, we go to the bank, we can lower that threshold then, correct?
Yes, yes, we could.
So we're just setting that threshold so that we have that option if we need to.
Yeah, 'cause at the beginning there, we didn't know, and they're still negotiating and fighting over the final prices, so we don't even, I mean, and there's litigation that has to go on with some of those costs over there, so we don't even know where those are gonna come out. They just gave us, this is your worst-case scenario that you're gonna run into. That's why we put that number out there, just so we didn't have to go for four hundred thousand and find out it was four fifty. We, but that's why it's eight hundred thousand, but it's not gonna be eight hundred thousand.
And, and it's my opinion that we move forward with this too, because every month we wait is another month we incur in, in fees and interest, correct? So.
You're making that motion?
So I'm gonna make the motion that we move forward with Dinsmore Legal Counsel for the bond validation proceedings.
Okay, and I'll second that.
John, so this process takes us through September seventeenth, it looks like.
Yeah, the seventeenth, and then you have to go to the bank and get it, so.
So then, so then we have a bank, that's where, I guess that's where I was leaving the question.
Probably October or so.
So we have to, after this is done, then that's when we go back to the bank.
And the bank took a couple weeks last time to, to process their loan, so.
So we'd be looking at October, so.
Mm-hmm.
Use that seven.
Yep, but hopefully we can switch things around a little bit and get that final number down, and maybe we can pull off something else, so, but this is an option.
So, does this eight hundred thousand, is that gonna cover that open cash app, the five, five hundred thousand?
That was the estimate that we got from, from Q C I, who has been working with Rycon and, and Moody's Allin as the number that we needed to have. Is that correct, Holly? That's what you?
That's correct.
Yep, yep.
And then are we still moving forward with paying two seventy-five on to that cash app?
It's still, uh, it's available out there, so if you guys wanna proceed and do that, but they, the USDA doesn't want us to pay half of it, so.
So the USDA has asked us not to make that payment now?
Well, he had mentioned that he didn't want it. Holly, you have that too, just to remind me. I'm, I'm a little tired still from last night, but we got the email back from Mike Antonelli, saying he didn't want us to pay half of it, correct?
I have not, I, no, I did not see an email.
Okay.
About that.
Yeah, he didn't, I'll, I'll double check it, but he was, we can always pay anybody who want them. I mean, if we wanna pay them, we can pay them.
He just wanted, US, the last thing I saw, USDA just wanted to verify that, uh, re, um, that wasn't a retainage, but the retainage amount was already used uh, prior to paying whatever we could, but they were okay if we made a payment.
Well, we had, we paid the one sixty-five of that. We still have the two seventy-five that we were able to, we can pay, that's what we can pay. So, yeah, it's out there. If you guys wanted, I mean, we, we could pay it, um, and submit it to them if that's how you wanna do it. I mean, just make a purchase order and, and a, and a check and we pay them.
Yeah, I'm just trying, I guess, yeah, and I think this needs to be a deeper discussion, and maybe we bring this up to the next meeting, but trying to understand where the two seventy-fives at, because it wasn't in the line items.
It was in contingency money, is where it was.
So we were pulling from contingency?
Well, contingency was just our leftover money that we didn't have.
From contingency from the firefight?
Fire, yeah, all of that was from fire. The three ninety was, was from fire.
Yeah, I guess I need to, I'd like to sit down and have a conversation about that, 'cause I'm not seeing the three ninety in the, in the line items, so, or the.
Any of those internally in those funds, you can move anything around in those funds to any account lines that are there, so you could change that at any time, and then the board can prove it and we'd be on our way.
So it'd have to come to the board for approval?
Right.
For reappropriation of line items?
Sure, but we have, uh, we have it out there. We looked the other day to make sure that we had an ability to have that in there, and we do. So you can, I don't know if Kirsten changed it in the system, I, I don't know, but.
Yeah, 'cause when I looked at it, the line item they were pulling out, it only had a hundred and some thousand in it, and then.
We did the math calculations before that, where we would be able to pull it all together.
Okay.
'Cause it's not in that line. It was in, a lot of it was in contingencies, which is just our leftover money in the fund where we didn't appropriate it pretty much. It's just sitting out there.
Okay, so contingencies is what we're pulling from.
Yeah. All right, all in favor? Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. I had an item out there. I need to get our second half, um, draws from the county approved, so I need a, a motion and an approval for that.
John, I'll make that motion, or we request our second half.
Okay.
Second.
Um, John, when do we anticipate these second halves to come in?
Well, they'll start coming in any time at the beginning of July, but they, they come in, uh, it depends on when people pay their taxes. So people that are escrowed, that money's out there already, so they could start sending that in that first week or so of July, but then it'll be finalized by the beginning of August. We'll have all of our draws by then, but we, we usually get four or five draws, and they come every Tuesday.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor. Sue, second. All in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. That's all I had.
All right, um, we still have the open items out there related to the general fund and the police, fire. Are we gonna have that discussion today, or are we waiting, holding that until the next meeting? About how we agree this first one?
I know those were the options I put out for you guys. You just have to select one, I guess, of how we wanna proceed.
The board wanting to discuss that today, or are we gonna?
I, I have to leave, so.
Well, it's Mike's and you.
You guys can discuss it.
Hold until next meeting. Okay, all right, so.
I didn't even see another.
It wasn't, I was asking, it was just, it was old business that should've been.
Yeah.
Still has to be addressed.
But why is it gonna be late?
No, it's a morning late, so.
All right, for the Good of Brimfield Township, is there anything else to be said for the Good of Brimfield Township? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Show move.
All right, you're second.
One in favor, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion passed. We are adjourned at nine thirty-eight A M.